Oh.
Yes, um, I was gonna, I was gonna make an announcement. To ask the folks on the line to uh. Type in.
Oh, okay, never mind, I was gonna say something totally.
That's okay, um, I'm going to call the meeting to order, um, to our. Guests, um, I would please ask you to sign in on the sign on, sign in sheet.
That was what I was going to say is I forgot to print it.
Oh.
I had another printing disaster today, forgot to print that, but I already captured the two people, but I'll bring it next.
Thanks, okay.
I'm sorry. I've already captured them here and I'll.
And uh, just so our, to our folks on the line, so just you Lori, um, if you wouldn't mind, just uh, typing your name into the chat, just so uh, we capture it, thank, thank you for uh, having your Zoom. Um, name, actually your full name, that is not the case for everybody, um, so if you wouldn't mind just typing your full name to the chat, so we can uh. Totally capture our attendance, it would be greatly appreciated. Especially by our secretary, right, when I did that, there was a lot of tech work, so. Alright, um, do we have any public comment? Like product?
Uh, I like the library event is Sunday, uh, November seventeen. Twenty percent of all sales at Mark Block Books will go to the library plus. The, will be a card with books that the librarians have chosen that they want to add to the collection, that'll be available for purchase. And the books that are not sold from that card at that point, the friends of the Troy Public Library will purchase and bring to the library.
Very nice.
It looks to be a very successful, there's been a lot, way more publicity this time. And tell your friends.
What's the one time?
It's from nine to four, the time was extended, okay?
Correct.
Yeah. I was so, I was pleased to see that the time was extended, um, I encourage everybody to go to this event, I uh, always get all my Christmas and holiday shopping done then, um. It also just becomes an informal meeting of everybody at the library, um, so you see a lot of familiar faces, um, and it's a. Fun, fun way to support the library, so, thank you so much, Fred.
One of the comments, uh, we, we, um, three of the, uh, three of us will be uh, circulating through the car, the crowd. Uh, on that day, um, but if anybody of you are there, um, and you see your friends, direct them to the card of the. Of the uh, library request.
Sounds good, thank you.
And I'll just say that they, they did agree to give us cash.
Hmm, it's agreed, there's been a lot of. The, the relationship with the, with Market Block folks has always been real good and in the last summer, it's been really strenuous.
I'm glad to hear that.
Few things though for uh, helping us with this.
Well, I think the board, they could agree well.
No, no, anybody who goes in.
Anybody, anybody, but yeah, oh, the other thing is that they uh, decide to have three staff people, they've only had two in the business, so there'd be three. People who will actually be able to cash people out, so the process of. Being in and out will be easier, the time is longer, we'll get all the money, um. And that's awesome, great, thank you.
Thank you so much, Fred. I'll see you someday. Um. Alright, I will go to the treasurer's report and approval of expenditures.
Um. The finance committee recommended that the board approve. Paying the bills and forty eight thousand. One hundred, I don't remember.
Forty eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty five cents.
By some.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Also discussed and. Uh, the decision was to bring it up here at the board was uh, that the. Treasury bills have, uh, for half the requests that we have. Are, will be due on Thursday. For a total of a hundred five thousand dollars.
So, just perfect time. It ain't.
Marie, would you like to restart that thought?
The treasury bills are coming due um, on Thursday for a hundred five thousand dollars, and we have spoken about using. Some of that money to supplement what we have received in terms of grants and foundation contributions toward the group.
Yes.
So, when would we expect the bill for the roof to be coming due?
I suspect there'll be multiple bills for the roof. Maybe a, a payment early on, pay for materials, and then a, maybe a second payment then. At completion, or maybe one near completion and one at the very end, so.
Do we have, um, just any, any rough idea when the first bill we might anticipate, I know the work isn't gonna be starting in the next six weeks, um, but the, so, the question was. Uh, reinvest, which then we would have to wait for the three months for the other six month bills to come.
Right.
Due, or we could hold the funds outside of our account if we need to fill in any gaps. Cause we didn't prove the eighty thousand.
Yes.
Okay. Um.
Did they indicate when?
I'm ready.
Not specifics, no.
I've not heard anything, and I don't heard anything tap on it either, um. If they have materials in hand, uh, they could potentially start working a month, then be finished in a month.
I, I thought that we wanted to see it done before winter.
Well, I know we did want to, but unfortunately, this is lingered for a little while and um, you know, we didn't execute the contract three months ago, or two months ago. And so, I.
We also have the um, masonry work that won't be done until next year.
The ma- which the masonry reconstruction, the parquet reconstruction?
Right.
I hadn't heard that, is that they indicated they would do that next year?
Yeah, so that, that was in a P L or something, so ultimately, um.
So, if that's the case, then certainly the final bill would not be until after that work is. Uh, done. And. I have not. Heard discussed any other. I've not heard anything about the schedule.
So, it's unacceptable, I, you know, because I had been under the impression that the masonry work was, was an emergent. Issue. That. That it really needed to be done quickly.
It doesn't need to be done, but uh.
Cause with the weather shift, it can't be done.
So, will they not start that until like Q two, do we know, like, are they thinking like springtime?
Oh, they weren't specific, it was just, this won't be able to start until the season that they're able to do any masonry work. Cause it just won't set.
Yeah.
So, it's not gonna be for a while.
You wouldn't wanna be doing extermination work till you have. Reliable time when you'll be above freezing or overnight as well, so.
So, they're not starting until Q two, at least.
I would guess so, yeah.
Unless global warming gets real bad in the next.
Yeah, for instance, we, now, if we, if we. You know, hardly possible to do temporary protections and supplemental heat, that's not included in that price.
So, we're not, and it's three months, what you're talking about.
To fin- to finish the project.
No, for T bills.
Oh, yeah, now, they could start the roofing work perhaps, before that, that doesn't need as long to cure. Uh, but again, I don't know, that would be two mobilizations, it'd be less efficient for them, I don't know what their, I apologize, I've not heard anything. About their plans later. Thank you for advising on the uh. Masonry piece.
Yeah, I think the masonry piece was only about fourteen thousand dollars.
It was definitely under twenty thousand dollars from the discussion.
Like, it was gonna have a different world, the masonry we've done first before the future stuff.
So, but I, but in terms of what we might owe. Uh, if the masonry work was, was quoted at twenty thousand dollars.
Seven hundred.
Hmm?
Oh, somewhere under that, that's all I remember.
Yeah, right, so, the largest part is for the roof, so if they do the roof before the winter, we would also.
If they choose to do that, then. It. If they choose to do that, I, 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 I'm not, I'm not, I've not heard that, like I said, in a perfect world, you'd do the masonry first and then the roofing. I mean. Make sure you work on top of a brand new roof. Sounds less than ideal. And then they have to extend the roofing up onto that masonry work that they do with repairs on. So, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm not prepared to give you more information, uh, to sort of make some phone calls and learn more, but at this time, I guess.
No, I, I, I disagree, I think that's the appropriate amount of information we need to uh, make a decision right now. Um. Since uh, we don't necessarily have a definitive start time uh, for the roofing work yet, um. I'm going to propose that we reinvest the T bills now, um, and then.
The entire hundred five thousand?
Yes. Um. And when the next set of T bills comes due, which will be in. February. If I have the cadence correct, um, we can. Have this discussion then, but I'm open to hearing other thoughts. Just so we make money while we can, um, and. But we know since it's scheduled, we have some coming out in relatively short term. Um, without necessarily having definitive timelines, um, we just have contracts in place, um, and I haven't necessarily seen the masonry contracts, I've only seen the roofing contract at this time. Um, but it just gives us a little more flexibility while not just letting our money sit dormant. That would be my thought, but please, fine. I don't wanna be the final voice necessarily.
It is not impossible to get the money out if we needed it.
Okay, do I imagine it's just we incurred some fee or nominal penalty?
Right, it's um.
No, I've been told it would be what it, they would be sold at whatever the rate was, right at the time.
The one clarification was also to, previous comment was I believe that the masonry is included in the roofing contract, God, it was not a separate contract, so, thank you, that was our total exposure for that. Thank you for the clarification.
So, was that a motion?
Standing. Sure. All in favor? Alright. Alright, okay, next we have our consent agenda. On it, we have purple the minutes of our meeting held October eighth, twenty twenty four. Purple of the special meeting minutes held October twenty third, twenty twenty four, uh, we have an administrative committee report, um. And a sub-directed search committee report, we have a building committee report, we have an outreach committee report, we have an upper Hudson library systems report, um. And I'm just gonna throw this out there, so I didn't write a president's report, I was looking for some precedent, um, we haven't typically had presidents' reports. I was looking at member libraries, um, they don't necessarily report that, um, are you all interested in? A report from me every month, um, I'd be happy to detail. Conversations I have, uh, anything I do with Kristi Ann, um, I just wanna know going forward, just so I can establish some rest of it. Um, if anyone has input, please, I serve at the pleasure.
I thought we had typically had presidents' reports.
I can continue that then, um, the last six months, they were typically stricken from the record. Or from the agenda.
Like, it may have depended on whether um. The president was the same person as. The U H L S representative.
Gotcha.
So, that may be why there were two separate people.
That makes more sense. Well, next month. You'll get a president's report from me, um, but I'll strike it from the consent agenda now, um, I can. Include any updates from the. Month of October into November, um, as a high level summary, it's not too much, um, so that's not a big deal, but, um, so I, so move to approve the consent agenda. Uh, with the omission of a president's report for this month.
There's. Is there a U H L S reporting here?
There's.
Yeah, I haven't read it, I'm sorry.
Should be after outrage. It's been a minute off, but did I miss it?
No, I got it.
Just think of part.
Yeah, I put the mail out medical orders, so that way I could keep track.
Just their system hours, right, like, it's not involving our website, that's just that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Going to our regular agenda now, Kristi Ann, you wanna kick it off with the director's report? You can't run away from that, I'm kidding.
Evening, um. Oh, so. Um, I'll, I'll still be in the building committee, but we do have uh, two quotes for the cement work for the Lancy Bird brand, so we'll be moving forward with that if we personally made a recommendation, and. That's that, to get our bit, um, in terms of Troy, uh, the obviously the abatement, not obviously, but the abatement has been uh, taken care of in the bills to be paid. We have both Ambient who um, did the analysis and C and C Unlimited, I think, that did the actual work, so. All that's completed, I think it comes to. Like a little over fifty five hundred or something, so that will be put into the uh, building contingency. Line item, which we can all have the dollars for, and uh, we did the walkthrough with Danley Riley Wilson. Seems like yesterday, um, there's a litany of things that we have to do to change uh, the library to prep, prep for the actual work. Um, so for instance, some people's desks will have to be moved in order to do certain things, what have you, um, one of the things that was brought up more by the clerk of the works versus the uh, folks coming through. Was, uh, should we be open, how much should we be open, how, how much is this gonna be, you know, difficult to manage with the library being open, so. There'll be some of those conversations that will come up with the next director that you all can decide. You know, once we have sort of the, a game plan of how things are moving along. Uh, one thing that also did come up, uh, Jim Lewis, I don't know if you guys know him, he's a uh, woodworker in the area. Um, he approached me a bit ago saying, you know, hey, if you need anybody to fix the front doors, I'd be glad to do them.
What does that mean?
What is what means?
What, fix them in what way?
Well, so that they open and close properly, so that they're shellacked, or whatever you do to doors to make sure that they're water. Resistant and they don't have, you know, rot and things like that, so he called again yesterday, um, and just realized he wasn't clear, he said that he would be interested in doing it for free. So, this is a gentleman that does like woodworking inside of churches and things like that, so not just your regular average Joe.
So, they, sorry, please go ahead. Uh, you, you care for any elaboration on that, or?
That was, I mean, he was very cryptic when he approached me, and I just got a phone message, then somebody said, oh, he didn't. He didn't, wasn't clear, he meant free, cause at first I thought, oh my gosh, we don't have the money for that.
Yeah, so I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll offer two things, one, you mentioned the clerk of the works made some comments. And I would say that is a person who's considering running, applying to be clerk of the works, there is currently no clerk of the works, yes, so, that was one clarification, um. Jim Lewis, I have to say, I've worked for Jim before in the past. I've known him for a long time, uh, he is a custom woodworker who can. Build anything. Not necessarily in a very quick time, it takes him a while, uh, but he makes it right, um, he has recently rebuilt several doors at the castle. Oh, so, um, if you wanna see his work, you can go to the castle and see, ask them which ones have been built or rebuilt or modified by Jim, um. He's very capable, he's not very fast.
Yes.
And that'd be for free, yes.
Very fast.
Yes. So, uh, that's, uh, if anyone has any other questions about Jim or the work, I'm happy to elaborate further on it, but, um, I feel he's, uh. I think he, I think he would do a bridge on it. I think the fact that doors are, you need to push the doors hard to open them, maybe what he is alluding to.
Yes.
My question's gonna be.
Oh, please go ahead.
Um, same question as before with the cement. Vendor, so, um, with those contractors, what procedures do we have in place and insurance and everything else, like, even if he's doing it for free?
So, I just wanted to bring it up so that it was in the minutes, because by the time any of this happens, I won't be sitting at this particular chair. So, it, that, that was the purpose for it, so I don't feel the need to like move on this right now, whatever, because we do have several projects. If you look at the Ferry Street door versus the Second Street door, you will find that that new door needs so much work. And that if we were gonna have anybody do doors, we might wanna look at the whole kit and caboodle, and obviously in stages, and we'd have to plan for things like, you know, they'll be gone for several months. You know, how are we gonna manage this in terms of egresses and fire code and all that, so there's, there's a bigger. Conversation.
Okay.
It's not just an easy, hey, it's free, let's do this now.
It'll be done in five days.
Well, you wouldn't work on it this time, you're.
We had double. Yeah, I'm like, this was.
My, my friends who do, do doors would.
Yeah.
So, so anyway, like I said, I just, you know, wanted to just make sure they were in the minute somewhere, cause it came up twice and, and stuff, so.
Same, yeah.
Yeah, Kristi Ann, thank you so much for bringing that up, um, and we don't need to make decisions, discuss anymore, you know, obviously, we need to find out some more information. Um, define lengths of time, um, I assume, like, I have refinished doors before, um, usually the easiest way to do it is take it off the hinges. Um, so we would need to discuss egress points, plans, all of that, um.
And since we'll be having the roof work and the H back work and a bunch of other things, if they not be something for a little bit.
Yes, but, um, that's very pretty common with Mr. Lewis, um, I look forward to seeing his work when they, uh, I'm definitely gonna ask about it, because I love woodworking, um. When they open Paint Castle where the Victorians.
Yeah, so that would technically be in kind donation, right?
Ooh.
Well, that, it would be an in kind donation on his part, right, okay.
We did, yeah, yes. So, but I think your question applies, you know. What does cover volunteers, because Jim isn't the only one who's, who's done things here on the building. Um, right, without charge, now I've seen volunteers work on the light outside, so. Are they covered in something?
Well, we have presenters come in, sure.
I think that, I think that's a, a larger question, probably.
Should I ask? Does any acknowledge and then they back to Jim, or is it, uh?
Not at this time, so ultimately, I wanted to make sure now that I had clarification on the, um. I think the compensation, but you know, what he was offering, that I can follow up with him and let him know that the board's had the conversation and that. At some point, someone would be following up with him, letting it know, or, you know, however you want me to word it.
Um, yeah, if I, if you just wanna respond and uh, just put myself, Kirsten, um, and afford anything long to our incoming director. Um, just so we can maintain the lots of communication, um, for when we wanna schedule it, cause that would be, that'd be very nice.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Uh, I will not go through the grants and stuff, cause uh, it hasn't really changed since the last time I met, uh, in terms of staff, we did hire two new, um, student helpers, which are the equivalent of. Uh, library pages, meaning that they put books back on the shelves or materials, and then we'll also remove materials to go to other locations. Um, they both seem to be working out really well, which is wonderful, and, um.
Can I, can I ask a brief question about that?
Yeah.
As a student helper, is that a paid position, or is that a, okay?
Yes, it's a paid position, so, uh, most libraries will call it a page, uh, there's something about civil service that I don't quite understand, that maybe they don't have the equivalent of a page cut or something, so. Uh, we call it a student helper, so in this particular case, they are, um, students at Ross's age, and sometimes we do get high school students, as long as they're over a certain age. Need certain qualifications.
We need to acknowledge that, so if you don't mind, I'll just get that done right now.
Need to acknowledge.
Accept the hiring of them?
Oh, I, okay. Oh, well, you acknowledge, you, you, that's, sorry, you, you accept.
Yeah.
I should say, you approve the hiring.
There is a new sharing.
Yes.
Uh. I'll just repeat that, yeah, just as a further. Incoming board members, um, every time the library hires someone, we only hire the director, every time the library operations staff hires someone, we just approve it. Um, so I'm going to motion that we approve the hiring of Melissa Erickson and Claire Riley as student helpers. All in favor?
Wait, this is a second.
I stand seconded.
Okay, um, so we're over budget and salary. So, how will we? What will we handle, our people?
So, ultimately, uh, we had budgeted for student helpers, and so these are backfilling student helpers, so how will we handle it?
We're twenty five thousand over seven one.
Yeah, um, so that's one of the things where you and I, uh, need to sit down this week when we go over checks and we'll go through all the details. And see where we can move the money around to compensate for.
I know, I'll go for it. No, what are, what's, what are we paying, what's there? Um, or is that not? Do we not discuss that?
We have to go into executive session when we discuss any compensation and stuff.
May I ask, if you have seen a spot in the. Twenty twenty four budget where those funds would be made available, or could be pulled from.
So, there are things like the building contingency, if we've only used a certain amount, that is a component, the als- we also have security, um, services. Which we didn't use for security purposes, cause that would have been hiring someone, so that's another place where we can move some of those funds to compensate for that. Um, you have concerns?
Well, I, I think it's too late to change the budget now.
You're not changing the budget, just re- re- allocating from, from, budget has been established.
I just can't, we got this right down the process, how far did we, they're already hired, right, so. How does that, do we wait this long? Before, like?
Yes, we typically only. They approve, acknowledge, hirings, terminations, uh, that are monthly meeting, it's not necessarily something that requires our immediate oversight when the. Process occurs operationally, since that is an operational procedure.
So, is the only concern if we're within budget on the line item for salaries and?
That is within the line item.
And, and even if that's the case, we're only over because of the over, uh. The better, uh, the retirement centers, right, correct?
We would have been, it seemed like we might have been over anyway, according to Marie back in. July, but that because, um, there was the, the director factor with retiring, but there was also. I don't remember the details, but there was, it also seemed like we were going to be, you know, not necessarily over budget, but that we were going over what the mid level would have been for the year. So, we do have, obviously, the two, uh, folks that have left the library, so there is that, we're also, um, you know, definitely in an awkward place, but at the same time, we still need. Operate, we have to have certain positions in order to manage the library, so.
So, I'm sorry, the two that you said left, these are the replacements, are those two specific?
No, I'm talking about the director, so, obviously.
But these are not new positions, they are.
No, no, they're not brand new positions, no, we, we have, um, at least a couple of student helpers, so, um, you know, definitely the circulation staff will cover when we have gaps and things, um.
So, how long have the positions been vacant then?
Uh, I can't tell you specifics, but I wanna say sometime, well, I, I shouldn't say, I don't know exactly when they were vacant, approximately.
It sounds like.
And sometimes it's spring, sometime, but somebody else left sometime during the summer, but we usually hire a summer, uh, age, so they came in, uh, and these are part-time, they're not full-time people, so no, not benefit. Uh, and these are part-time, they're not full-time people. So no, not benefited or anything. So.
Do you believe that you can identify the line items in the? Budget that has not been fully utilized?
Yes.
That would accommodate the salary for these two individuals for the rest of this budget year?
Uh, I think so. I, I have to sit down and look at the numbers some separately.
We have more discussion at this time?
I would say that we have to approve it cause or acknowledge and approve, right? Because. We already hired them. They, they're here, um, but it sounds like there's a. Larger issue that I would love to see resolved in terms of just being aware of what our. Budget is for salaries and where we're at on that. I'm concerned that there's a disconnect in not knowing exactly what it is. And not hearing about it sooner and. Being able to anticipate that. No one wants to be surprised.
Clarity around, um, our budget, how we manage to move money is absolutely a priority.
Yeah.
Going forward, it's, this is a very.
And it's weird for everybody.
There's a motion on the floor. All in favor? Marie? Do you abstain or do you know? Your no, alright.
Okay, can I, I'm sorry. So who motioned? I'm sorry.
I second. I brought a beer except Marie.
Oh, thank you.
Can you put a comment or an action from me? That's like, I would like to understand our salary budget line item much better. Okay, thank you.
Alright, Chrissy, would you like to continue?
Sure, um, so I had sent out, uh, well, I, we have it here, we only had three incident reports. Um, this particular month, which was good, um, in the grand scheme of sometimes we have more and, uh, they weren't minor in any way. They reform and that obviously they were an incident, but we didn't have to call the police or anything. We did have a situation, uh, with a patron who, uh, wanted. Someone to sign an I nine form for them, which I sent out to the board. Um, and the person ended up coming in cause it hadn't been done properly. Um, I have informed the staff, uh, that reference staff that we do not. Sign anything ever, um, that like with medical or legal advice, we can only point them to the information. We can't. Give them medical or legal advice. Um, so anyway, so, uh, the patron has since come back. Uh, three times now for different situations, but today we had another, I don't wanna call it an altercation, cause it really wasn't bad. But just, um, another misunderstanding about something completely different and, um, swearing at the staff again and, you know. What have you. So, uh, they were removed from the library for the day. And so we're just going to keep, um, monitoring this situation. Uh, after the third time, we'll, you know, either remove them for a month and so on and so forth. Ultimately, part of the process is to start either filming or reporting what we're saying, talking about looking for legal, you know, uh. Support for them, things like that. So it's, uh, you know, it's escalated, but not really escalated. So I just wanted to, um, bring that to everyone's attention. That we're monitoring it. So sometimes they come alone, sometimes it's with another individual and so.
Sounds like, um. Another bit of policy, we need to write in the administration committee, um, just my research in signing I nines. Um, anybody, any member of the public can, um, the, that authorization does not reflect on the institution, um. So the individual would be the one who would become legally liable for it. Um, so we should probably have some governing document that we can present should the situation ever occur.
And then, uh, the last bit on here is just detailed statistics about the, um. Ball Festival, which was amazing. Uh, obviously if you guys were here, you probably experienced lots of people. So we had about. Four hundred and twenty-five people on site, uh, lots of programs, lots of things going on. So the details are in here.
I'm gonna have three scarecrows.
Thank you so much, Chrissy.
Do we, it, have we heard? How much are quick response bills?
No, we still haven't heard back.
Rapid response? For the Lansingburg?
Well, we will wait to see that when it comes up.
Well, we know it's substantial.
We didn't get a bill yet, so. Is there something you want to discuss about it?
No, I, I, it just would be good to know how much it actually is.
I don't think we will until we get the bill, but. Alright, um, next item on our agenda, uh, I would just wanted to formally close out the search committee, um, so I'm just gonna make a motion. Um, that in recognition of fact that we have successfully. Hired a new director for Troy Public Library, um, the ad hoc search committee is no longer. Needed, um, so why so motion that we dissolve the search committee?
I also just wanna say thank you to everyone that helped, which was all of you in different ways. And I think we handled this. Very well and not knowing what we're doing and figuring it out.
I agree. This, uh, I would say was a successful exercise, um, and a. Very, very firm demonstration of what we can do when we collaborate as a body. So. I'm very pleased to, uh, begin working with Tim in a few short weeks. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Okay, um. Next thing on the agenda, so we close the search committee, um, I'm going to propose that we create two new ad hoc committees. Um, the first of that, um, first of those committees, that will be the onboarding committee. Um, this committee will be responsible for assisting and facilitating, um, Tim becoming acquainted with T P L systems. Partner organizations, um, partner, partners in the community, partners in the state, our federal representatives. Partners with Upper Hudson, uh, the whole shebang, um, just so he has someone to turn to, um, that we can funnel. Um, our advice to, um, in a. Not overwhelming manner, um, because he's moving across the country and starting a new job. Um. And there's going to be a lot of work to do. Um, so I'm proposing that we. Inset this committee, um, we will start with members of the board, um, that committee will meet and then we will decide who else. Um, we would find relevant to extend an invitation to participate with.
You see this being a temporary?
This will, I do not expect this to last longer than three months. So I am so motion. Any discussion? Um, I will also volunteer to chair this one for the.
This is the onboarding.
This is the onboarding of the, the, uh, so, oh, we can. Be very specific, uh, this is the director onboarding.
I just went as opposed to the election.
Yes.
Is there, I, I, I think, uh. Christian has done so much here. She knows more about the inner workings of the library. Is there a role for. Uh, the acting director to participate in this onboarding process?
Absolutely.
A member of the committee or?
As a standing member of the committee, correct, yes. So currently the board and Chrissy and Jabal.
amended.
I wouldn't think it's your role.
No, I mean. Is a completely different.
Yes. Um, do we have any interest in joining that actual, we should probably vote.
Yeah, I was gonna say you have a second already, so.
All in favor? Alright, who was, so who's interested in joining that one?
So, yep.
Maybe we'll do this by exclusion, no? I'll pass for now, Sam, alright.
Reach out this, thank you for.
Excellent, thank you, um. And just to get the ball rolling, so it's on top of our minds, um, I would like to inset an election committee, um, just so. Uh, it's a multi-disciplinary education and understanding process that will near what the Albany Public Library does. Um, to facilitate their elections, uh, people's understanding of the elections, the roles of it, um, to be more prepared for it. Um, I so much. So any discussion? Any, any discussion? Um, I don't, I just wanna say for the record, I don't see the activities of this. Uh, ad hoc committee kicking off until the new year.
I agree with that, although I do think that we, we talked about in the, the last board meeting about. Meeting with the League of Women Voters to go over what we did this last time, and I don't think we should wait until the new year. Because I think we should do it while it's still in their. Clear in their mind, if they're in our mind, what some of the issues were.
I agree.
So is the idea that the first meeting, so the first meeting would happen before January, kicking it off with this meeting? With the league?
The meeting with the league, I would think.
As a function of this meeting, like, okay, just each other on two separate things.
No, I haven't reached out to them yet. Cause they were handling the election which just happened in terms of getting information out through libraries and other places. So I wanted to give them. A week. And so I figured after this meeting, I would.
And it really, I mean, it should be as much our responsibility. Christianity is yours to get in touch with them.
Yeah, and. I, I just figured I would reach out saying, you know. And I knew that people wanted to participate in them, so it would just be in the league.
Alright, motion? All in favor? Alright, um, is anyone interested in sharing that? Carolyn, thank you. Um, who's interested in being that? Who, who's not interested in being on? Everybody? Sounds good.
So I'll reach out to the league.
That's great.
This feels like a light left, right? Like, it's pretty light.
Yeah, I, I think this is just to come to mutual understanding, to educate each other in the process, how we wanna be involved, what lessons learned, we can take.
Prior election.
Yeah, what lessons we can take from our partner libraries, Upper Hudson, about what they do, which is the inspiration behind this, um, after some discussions.
Is recruitment part of it?
It will be.
It can be.
I think, I mean, my, my, if you were to ask me my opinion of what this committee should do, yes, that would definitely be it. And educating.
New trustee onboarding and education should absolutely be an outcome.
And, you know, information meetings for people if they're interested in.
To clarify, you mean referring to board of up, up, upcoming board members, right?
Yeah, yeah, how do I identify community? Yeah.
Well, got it, thank you.
And I think it's a good idea because I actually heard that there was a miss, a similar issue, uh, with the. Database not being sorted. In the prior election. The person who came on, um. It had a common name. So when she searched for herself. That issue, uh. Was very obvious and. She went to Paul and Paul had the I T person. Correct the database at that time.
In the past one, in a past election.
The one before last. So it would be good to, you know.
I'm gonna call for a recount right now.
And Christine, you had said that you were working on a checklist and that you had updated. Can you put that, can that, is that in the Dropbox or can it be put in the Dropbox? So. It's not updated, um, and I can put what we have at least for now. Yeah, absolutely.
If this was to ever happen again, we would have somewhere to, to find it, that's not.
Yeah, I'll just clean it up because it's, uh, literally a checklist and things have been checked off.
Right.
And also the, the person who has managed the. This is, is going to be changing.
Interesting.
I don't know whether we could have both people, the new person and the old person or.
The committee discussed.
They will do is also set up an election committee holder, like we have.
Thank you.
Um, then we can pilot this for now, if this is something we wanna add to the standing committee every year, et cetera, um. We'll go from there. I just wanted to formalize it now so we can have the discussions, start planning. So it's not May, you just start thinking of these things in brush, um. But is it quick?
Very quick.
Okay.
Signs about the election on your agenda, because there's always a question about. Wh- where the signs go and in the past, um, it, it's been, so it's, it's hard to know that there's an election sometimes. Because of the signage that's outside or inside that there's an election.
Do you know that? That might be, that's, I won't think. Yeah. Thank you so much. That's, that is good. I didn't really see a lot of signs this year, so. Alright, um, now that's out of the way, uh, next item on our agenda, uh, is our U H L S representative, um. For those of you who aren't aware, um, since we're one of the largest population serving libraries in the Hamlet region, we have standing representation. On board of the Upper Hudson Library System, Library Services System, sorry. Uh. Executive, this is executive speech is failing me right now, so sorry. Um, currently Evelyn Katz Greenstein is our representative. Those terms are for five years, um, her term. Will end on the thirty-fifth of June in twenty twenty-eight. Um, since we had a new board composition, I just wanted to put it to the board. Um, and then formalize whether we would like to. Um, retain Evelyn as our representative or if we would like to discuss other options. Um, I talked to Tim Burke, uh, their bylaws make it our decision to make.
Do we want to go into executive session to discuss this?
They wouldn't warn it. This is a board appointment, so. Unless there's some understanding of the open meeting law that I'm missing.
Well, you, you can go into an executive session to discuss an appointment or, or. Um. I don't know quite the language, but.
Would you love to move?
I, I can so move if we feel it's appropriate to do so.
There's second?
It's not.
Are people? Do, are people interested in having an open discussion?
I'm gonna second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any post, extensions? Alright. Alright, um, Chrissy Ann, in our. Public, if you would be so kind as to, uh. Thank you.
Day ends, we're going in the next about two weeks.